And I want to welcome you all. At this time, if you will stand for our invitation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. And I ask, if Council members, would you like to say a prayer? I caution everybody about the prayer.
Yes. Father, we're in everlasting power, God our God, and God our God. Father, we thank you for being able to assemble today for our city council meeting to be able to do the business of our city. Father, we thank you that you did not let us have any fatalities in the city of Hartsfield, and I don't think in Darlington County. And Father, we thank you that you have been so merciful to us. Please help the other people that have been damaged by the storm. Please help them and give them all the needs that they need for this time. Thank you for everyone that came out tonight, and may you bless all of our council members and all of our citizens. Please fire, rescue, everyone. In that's our name, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Praise the Lord. 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 Praise the Lord.
Okay, just want to welcome everyone. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I think the council might be all on the record saying that we applaud and appreciate the hard work and efforts of the first responders, of city staff and personnel that came out and spent time away from their families, making sure that our citizens were taken care of. I also want to thank the good people of Hartsfield who have been helping neighbors dig out of this mess and making sure that everyone's taken care of. It's just one of those, one of those things that proves that we're an all-American city beyond awards and moments, that our people live that motto. So, thank you all for the part you played in this. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion for approval of minutes. So, I should have said minutes except from the 13th, 2016. Is there a motion?
Seven seconds.
Any discussion here in all, in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Minutes stand approved. Presentations, I inform the gentleman's evening. Recognition of new hires, tan promotions, Madam Manager.
We don't have anyone here for that.
Okay. Item B on the agenda, public hearing for the South Carolina Job Economic Development Authority. If you want to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I really was, I'm saying, I'm making a presentation, that the purpose of tonight's meeting here tonight is the federal tax law requirement of holding a public hearing in advance of the issuance of taxes and bonds by the South Carolina Jobs Economic Development Authority. But also on your agenda is a local support resolution relating to this matter. It relates to the financing of a 60-bed assisted living and memory care facility that will be across the street from the hospital. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain them, but otherwise, I'll take my seat and we can just have the public hearing.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, item five, ladies and gentlemen's management update. Madam Manager.
Sure. Our team did a great job with this storm response. It was a little harder than we expected. I think five of the seven council members do not have power for the record. I'm catching a little grief about having power at my house as it is. Tommy Rivers, he left us with code enforcement, just wanted to let you know that he took a job closer to home. He was commuting about 40 minutes every day, 45 minutes. So, right now, we don't have anyone in that position. If you have any code enforcement issues, you'll just talk to Mary Catherine or David in the navigator office in the meantime. We received word today, we received $160,000 grant for Marley Park playground improvements. That was through the Land Water Conservation Fund. I'm pretty excited about that. Mary Catherine wrote that grant several months ago. We just got word today. Garbage and recycle is back on normal pickup schedule if we get to your house. I have passed out before council a list of the roads in town that still have trees and power lines. I think there's 13 or so left. So, we can't work on those issues until Duke comes and helps us with those issues. Staff has done a great job. They were still working clearing a tree last night in front of Billy's house around 8:00 even.
No, actually, not my house, my neighbor's.
Neighbor's house, close to your house.
Well, I think you may have.
And I hope so. There's a rumor going around that we, it's not true, we have no water issues, so no one needs to boil their water. We are not cutting off water. We have received numerous calls about that today. Not sure how that started, but that is not true. So, please relay that information. Red Cross is starting to feed people this afternoon was the first time. They just notified us today. And that was at Dunnett Second Baptist Church. I think they will be back tomorrow. I don't have the information on what time yet, but I can pass it out to council. I can call tomorrow when we get that information. City staff went street by street yesterday. We started, finished up today doing damage assessments. That's for FEMA. To our knowledge, no one from FEMA is in town right now. We've had reports of people posing as FEMA. They are not FEMA. So, if you have anyone like that, or you see anyone like that, just give us a tag number. But city staff is the one doing the damage assessments. We don't need a lot of personal information, which is basic information. So, if you get any reports of someone posing as FEMA or asking for a lot of information, just let us know and we can report that to emergency management for the county. And I think that is all I have.
Can I ask a question? While we're on that subject, do you have any information right now as to any emergency assistance for food that people are able to get?
Senator Scott Thomas called late this afternoon, and they asked what we needed. And my response was, we need to know where people are going to get vouchers for food or how that process is going to work. Because last time we came in, gave out the vouchers, we didn't receive any. We're on that happening at this point. Red Cross is just doing the one mil, and that's, they're targeting people that don't have power right now.
Okay, well, could you check further? Because we have people that lost power for days, and so their foods have perished, right? Even in the freezer. And we need to get some direct, but power has been restored now, but unfortunately, the food has perished.
I will check on that. I'm worried.
Thank you very much.
It took several, it took almost a month, I feel like, last time.
Yes, and I know it's going to take some time, but people just need to know that help is on the way.
Okay.
We do have a FEMA meeting at the county level on Thursday morning. Jeff Chief Burrow and myself are planning on going to that meeting to start. I think that may be something that we can bring up at that meeting and also what the FEMA process is going to look like for us.
All right.
Get it real quick. We have a lot of debris, obviously, that we need to pick up. We contracted with their grain today that's going to help. They'll bring in an open truck that's actually larger than ours. Sanoco has agreed to let us take the debris there, and I just wanted to grind it all up. If we have it, if we do that, it will take everything when bringing over there. So, I think that should speed up the process. And that person will start on Thursday. So, you might see another crew in town picking up debris that we contracted.
Everybody good?
No. If, when you, you all check and the information you get, could you please make sure that I get it? Thank you.
Stressed the grounds last night that was clearing that tree so Duke could get it and reset that hole did a fantastic job. Those guys need to be recognized.
There was about six or seven of them. It was after dark when they were trying to clear.
8:30 last night. They were working like demons. They were going at it.
Because I do have a family on Bell Avenue that the big tree actually fell in the bedroom while they were doing it. And they're staying with neighbors right now. So, I need to get that information as soon as we can.
And we turned all of that information into FEMA. So, the county takes it and they give it to FEMA. Every single house, every street in Hartsfield has been covered.
All right. For the, for the.
What about the trees that were on private property?
That's what we've turned in, all of the ones that have fallen on private property.
So, for the benefit of council, we kind of began the preliminary process of doing an after-action review, where we go back and critically assess what we did well, what we didn't do so well, what we could do better. And so, we should have that in a couple of weeks, once we kind of deconstruct the whole process. I think the end result will be pretty beneficial. Hope that we don't ever have to use it, but get better every time. Okay? All right, there's nothing further for the manager. We will receive items on the consent agenda as information. Without objection, they stand approved. Moving on to unfinished business, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4265. The manager will publish.
To lease the den to the property at 145 West Carolina Avenue to Governor's School for Science and Math Foundation.
You've heard the reading by title and presentation by the city manager. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like it to be heard on ordinance 4265, if you would rise, state your name and address for the record, come to the front. Please look at your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none for this final reading, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor.
This is the unit, the unit 4265.
There's a motion, there's a second. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye. Likewise opposed, the ayes have it. Item seven on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4266. The manager will publish.
To lease the property at 231 West Carolina Avenue to Brent Blackwell, TBA Blackwell Insurance Agency.
You've heard the reading by title and presentation of the city manager. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing on ordinance 4266. If you'd like it to be heard on ordinance 4266, if you rise, state your name and address for the record, come to the front. Please look at your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We pass ordinance 4266.
Second. There's a motion, there's a second, is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye. Likewise opposed by nay. Motion carries. We made on the agenda the public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4267. The manager will publish.
Authorizing the option to sell .04 acres of property located on the south corner of 1912 West Carolina Avenue to Jerry and Angela Lane, per agreement dated January 26, 2011.
You've heard the reading by title and presentation of the city manager. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing on ordinance 4267. If you'd like it to be heard on ordinance 4267, if you rise, state your name and address for the record, come to the front. Please look at your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We pass ordinance 4267.
There's a motion, is there a second? Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Madam Manager, if this passes, will the city attorney get in touch with the lanes without the next step across the.
I'll let him know that for him to reach out to me.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. The ordinance passes. Item nine on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4268. The manager will publish.
It's to authorize the purchase of land at tax not parcel number 0560602052, located at 212 Henry Street, consisting of .16 acres from John Farmall.
You've heard the reading by title and presentation of the city manager for ordinance 4268. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like it to be heard on ordinance 4268, if you rise, state your name and address for the record, come to the front. Please look at your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We pass ordinance 4268.
There's a motion on the floor. If there's a second to the motion. Second. Is there any discussion on the motion, the ordinance?
At the moment, where does it sit?
Uh, China, John Farmall, the house that is right beside.
Parkers.
Which is, we're within the.
It's Kansas.
Does, the White House, that he went to. Okay, if there's any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Likewise opposed by nay. The ordinance passes. Item 10 on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4269. The manager will publish.
To authorize the purchase of land at tax not parcel number 0560603046, located at 146 West Carolina Avenue, consisting of .17 acres from D and R rentals.
You've heard the reading by title and presentation of the city manager. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing on the ordinance 4269. If you'd like it to be heard on ordinance 4269, if you rise, state your name and address for the record, come to the front. Please look at your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We pass ordinance 4267.
Second. There's a motion, there's a second, is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye. Likewise opposed by nay. The ordinance passes. Item 11 on the agenda, the public hearing and final reading of ordinance 427. The manager will publish the ordinance.
Authorize the purchase of land at tax not parcel number 0560603069, parking lot located beside 146 West Carolina Avenue, consisting of .15 acres from Somi B rental incorporated and medical company to incorporate it.
You've heard the reading by title and presentation of the city manager. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like it to be heard on ordinance 427, if you will rise, state your name and address for the record, come to the front. Please look at your comments in two minutes or less. I'm going to put that on my headstone. I say that on my sleeve. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We pass ordinance 427.
There's a motion, there's a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that there are none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay. The ayes have it. Moving on to new business, item 12, Resolution 10-16-01. Resolution in support of the issuance by the South Carolina Jobs Economic Development Authority of its economic development revenue bonds, Hartsfield Owl Project pursuant to the provisions of Title 41, Chapter 43 of Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, in the aggregate principal amount of not exceeding $8 million. Is there such a motion?
Seven.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. The ayes have it. The resolution has passed.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, do you need to ask if there are any public comments?
Yeah, I was getting ready to ask the parliamentarian how he would like the proceed of the public hearing. At this time, if anyone would like to have any public input on Resolution 10-16-01, you would be invited to the front to speak. I'm sorry, the back?
Good.
Hearing that there are none, the chair will close the public hearing, and thank you, sir, for your.
Thank you.
And best of luck in your project. Item 13 on the agenda, Resolution 10-16-02, changing the date of the Tuesday, November 8, 2016 city council meeting. Is there such a motion for the resolution?
Seven.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. Resolution passes. Item 14 on the agenda, Resolution 10-16-03, for the city manager to be given the authority of approved recreational use agreements. Is there such a motion?
Seven.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. Resolution carries. Item 15 on the agenda, Resolution 10-16-04, to express the intention of the city council of the city of Hartsfield, to cause the city of Hartsfield South Carolina to be reimbursed with the proceeds of obligations for certain costs associated with the acquisition, equipping, and installation of various utility vehicles and communication radios. Is there such a motion for the resolution?
Seven.
Is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. Resolution carries. Item 16 on the agenda, Resolution 10-16-05, approval of the bid award for the city of Hartsfield water tank repairs. Is there such a motion?
Seven.
Is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. Resolution carries. Item 17 on the agenda under new business, Resolution 10-16-06, approval to apply for 2016 South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority Basic Infrastructure Grant for Black Creek Pump Station Improvements. Is there such a motion?
Seven.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. Resolution carries. Item 18 on the agenda, Resolution 10-16-07, approval to apply for 2016 South Carolina Parks Recreation and Tourism Undiscovered South Carolina Grant for Upfit of Property Located at 146 West Carolina Avenue. Is there such a motion?
Seven.
Is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. Resolution carries. Item 19 on the agenda, Resolution 10-16-08, approval to apply for the 2016 South Carolina Association for Community Economic Development Healthy Insights Grant Program. Is there such a motion?
Seven.
Is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. Resolution carries. Item number 21 under first under new business. Nope. Item 20, skip that, I'm sorry. Item 20, Resolution 10-16-09, approval to apply for the 2016 National Parks Service Civil Rights Grant Program. Is there such a motion?
Seven.
Is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. Resolution carries. Item 21 on the agenda under new business, first reading of ordinance 4271. The manager will publish.
To amend the residential solid waste user fee pursuant to Chapter 70, Solid Waste, Article 1, in general, Section 70-2, residential solid waste user fee.
Okay, you've heard the first reading of ordinance 4271. The chair will entertain any motions from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We pass ordinance 4271.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
From the floor, Madam?
Yes. Mayor, would this be for residents as well as businesses?
This is actually just for residents. Businesses already received a 7.5% increase with our July, with our budget. And just to give you a little bit of background on this, Natalie and I both sat through multiple presentations from the Public Service Department, in particular, Governmental Services regarding improvements that need to be made to equipment and to your operations. Then we presented this to Finance Committee just this past week, all these changes and operational upgrades and equipment upgrades. And this speed increase is necessary in order to make those upgrades happen, in order for us to continue the level of service that we need to continue and really improve upon what we are currently doing. In the past, yard debris has taken us up to five weeks just to, just to pick up yard debris. And this change in operations and additional equipment, different kinds of equipment, is going to allow us to be able to pick up yard debris and to do the sort of level of service that we need to do.
Okay, any further discussion?
We are there to help people picking up all the stuff that people put out by the road.
Brown goods.
On the streets, you see, like, brown flames.
They have a plan for how they're going to handle the brown good pickup. They're actually looking at changing everything from even only having to pick up four days a week. That way, normal operation, four days a week, they give the flex day in the middle that would allow them to be able to go pick up those brown goods and to take care of, like, this week, of course, is going to take extra time to pick up extra yard debris because of the storm. So, it's a complete operational overhaul that includes not just equipment, but equipment, a change in how they operate, a change in how they do their hours. It's a total overhaul of how we do the services, in particular, on the residential side.
And if there's going to be a charge for the brown goods?
There is a charge for brown goods already.
Yeah, I know there already is, but we're getting ready to go up, and then we're going to, we're going to apply the same charge, or are the charges going to increase?
There's no proposed change to the brown good service fee at this point. I don't recall what that fee is, but there's no proposed change to that.
It's the same fee.
Right, it doesn't remain the same.
I do want to point out to council, we need this approval so we can order all of the new equipment, and it will take some time to get here. We have looked at trying to do this January 1st. I don't know if that's going to be possible, but we want to do it as quickly as we can, as soon as we can get the new equipment here. And we didn't just do this by looking at things online. We actually went and watched demos. So, the city of Columbia hosted us, Casey hosted us, Clinton. We made sure that it's working there, and they are able to pick up yard debris on the same day every week. That is our goal, and that's what we're working towards with this.
See, this, this increase affects everybody and all residents, but all residents don't have yard degree pickup. And, and that's what I want to pull out of there, because we have no way of knowing what resident, you know, receives pickup and which one don't, although they all pay the fee.
And that's really, that's just the way the structure of our trash service is. Our environmental services fee allows for yard debris, recycling, and regular garbage pickup, and that is built into the fee. And so, whether or not people use it, it's already built into the fee. And so, we would encourage our residents, if you're not using it, use it, because you are paying for the service.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
The only thing I'd like to know, because now I'll go back to the discussion that I had with you. I have no problem with what you're doing. You know, we used to have this workshop, and we would discuss this stuff. And now, we get it presented to us. And to me, I don't have a fair way of really knowing what it's really about until I hear it first time. I would like to go back to where we would have that meeting, workshop meeting, so we could discuss this stuff. And maybe when we come in here, we wouldn't have to, say, blank, blank, instead of going through all this discussion. Because there are some things that I do have questions about. I know we have to have the equipment stuff to work with, but I would like for it to be presented in another way, like it was before, my first time in the company, workshop way, where we can just, with this stuff, instead of coming in here, somebody presenting to me. Because sometimes you present things to me, I can understand it, but I don't like the way, or the way it's done, or what's it going to cost. What's the cost of the stuff?
I'd hope to have Dana here tonight. He, I'm working nonstop, I'm with city issues, and he actually has issues that he has to take care of tonight. But we can obviously, because he has a PowerPoint reservation he can do. He did this for Finance Committee, this name is recommendation out of Finance Committee, but he can do it for the whole council as well.
I'd like to say that, because my constituents, the first thing they're going to say, you know, when you say that you weren't going to go up.
Well, as, as much as, as we want to change the structure, I think if this is first reading, we can certainly motion to table it, if that would give everyone an opportunity to digest what's come out of the Finance Committee. But we do have the opportunity now to have the Finance Director answer some of those questions. Our work session's public anyway, so there's really no difference in the discussion now of last week, sir.
I don't want to postpone anything. I just want it done yesterday.
Right.
The structure says that when I come in here, I won't have to listen to something that I hadn't heard before. I'm not looking for postponement of what we need, but I just want it done in a structure where, where to be out of my way and I know what's going on.
And so, why don't we take a moment, have you make those questions answered?
In particular, are we wanting to know what equipment we're buying?
I think they're wanting to, to discuss through the structure and the cost increase, um, and the equipment. Basically what that, uh, I mean, the presentation is nothing amazing.
No.
And let me, let me kind of frame where we, where we're going with this. We haven't had a rate increase in quite some time. We pushed it to commercial. Um, the commercial is at a point where we don't believe as a finance committee, uh, the businesses can stand another increase since July?
July.
Right, since July. What we've discovered is we, um, aren't performing at the level that we would expect our citizens to expect from us. And we, our team has made a commitment to make more perfect the process of collecting solid waste and garbage. So in other cities, they're able to do it like clockwork. Uh, on a certain day, there is no makeup that is needed. Uh, the process that, that this team's, the staff has seen, uh, we want to make a commitment to, because what we'd like to do is we want to earn people's trust with how we perform. And this new process is going to allow us to perform at a level where people are going to really feel like they're getting something for their money. That you'll never have to worry about it taking three weeks to get, you know, yard debris out of your yard. Um, and that's the commitment that the city wants to make. The managers identified that we need to make some serious overhauls and improvements to gain more efficiency, which is going to cost us less in the long run. But to do that, uh, they feel that we don't have the, the, uh, capacity to bond out this capital investment, that it needs to be based off of a user fee. Uh, so the average, the increase to the fee is exactly what?
It's around 12, 13 percent. I don't have the exact percentage, but it's just like less than $2.
It's a less, lesser two dollar increase, um, per household.
Let me ask this question.
Sure.
With, with the municipality tax that we pay on our property taxes and on the vehicle, vehicle taxes. With those taxes being, for instance, on your vehicle, if you have a fairly new vehicle, um, the municipal tax is actually almost double the rate of the county tax. Is there no way we could get funding from the municipal taxes that we already collect?
Those taxes are being used to fund the general government operations. So all property taxes that come in, that you pay on your vehicles, whether it's personal property or your real estate property, that's on fire service, police service, all the other services that we provide to the municipality. The way we treat environmental services is we try to treat it as a break even, break even proposition so that the service fees that are brought in cover the cost of operations. And we have just gotten to a place where it's been pretty well break even. When I first arrived, we were operating in a deficit every year for quite some time. And we have a significant deficit that we have built up over time. Um, and so we have just gotten to be break even, but you can't sustain break even without raising rates because the cost of, um, operations continue to increase, whether it's labor costs, equipment costs, you've got to replace your equipment in order to keep up. Um, and so we have artificially kept our rates low on the left side. We've been able to build it up off the commercial, but commercial cannot withstand all the increases that are needed to operate, to operate our, our garbage service. In fact, those costs are in residential, not in commercial.
I understand that. So last, or was it this year that we didn't have a mileage increase?
It was a decrease this year.
There was a decrease, mileage decrease this year.
A mileage decrease this year. And this would be less than the, um, a mileage increase, correct?
Correct. Also, I want to point out that we didn't go, we just wanted to see if we were competitive. And so a couple of years ago, we looked at the private sector and said, here's what we do, how much would it cost for you to come in and do this service? And that cost was around $28 a household. So we're significantly less than the private sector can do it. Also, if you live in a county and you're having trash pickup, this is also less than you're paying in the county and we're providing two additional services because they're only receiving garbage pickup, but we provide yard debris and recycling for less than you're paying if you live in the county and choose to have that service.
Did we ever go any further as to looking to get county residents because the city can provide it cheaper, um, county residents to have city services?
No, we did that for commercial. It was something we looked at.
So did we look at?
I don't know that we're, there's some legalities that have to be worked out there. I don't know that we can necessarily legally go into outside of the corporate limits and provide trash service for residential. That's something that's been debated throughout the state and there's some legal ramifications to that. Um, it's definitely something that we have looked at and I think on the commercial side, we have more capability there than we do on the residential side to pick up additional customers.
Yeah, we have more, but we don't know that that's an absolute no.
Correct.
For residential.
It would have, we would have to pick up, it wouldn't make sense financially for us to go to Clope Colony, for example, and only have five houses because that's a lot of places to drive by. In the city, it's a lot better because every house on that street you're going to pick up. So we can look at that, but I don't know that financially it would make sense for us.
Now, I, I was just asking because, you know, that conversation was, um, held before in the past and as you say, I think we look at it more on a commercial side than a residential side.
Right.
So I don't want us to do anything that's not, um, rushed.
Right. It also borders the line between city residents and county residents.
I think that's where some of the legalities and even just perception comes into play is, um, you want people to feel like they're in the city, they get additional services for, for living in the community.
So in, in fairness, the discussion of the finance committee, if I may, Bob, was that we felt very passionately that we wanted to earn people's trust by purchasing the equipment and proving to them that we were going to provide a different level of service at a different level of reliability. The unfortunate thing is we don't have that as an option because we just don't have the money to front the equipment, the capital improvement. So this is the only method forward is if council wants to make better the service, we need the equipment that we've identified as critical to that function. Um, if council would like to continue the way that the service is being operated, then you can sustain a rate increase, uh, maybe this year, but not every year because, uh, like the finance director says, fuel costs and equipment costs and maintenance and it's like everything else. Everything is going to increase. I do think that given, given council's commitment to reducing the mileage, um, this is a small piece back compared to what we did to save the taxpayers this last budget cycle. Uh, and I think that you guys have, have been very diligent about not raising this fee arbitrarily, uh, which may have been done before our council. You guys have really worked hard to keep that at a reasonable increase over a reasonable period.
It's been at least five years, I think, since we had an increase and the only reason we had an increase was because we did away with the yellow bag and we were basically increasing. We have not had an increase since then.
If everything is perfect world, the new equipment is going to allow, but that's possibly a three man operation now to drop back to. So the money that we'll save with that possibility, because just like $95,000, that party bought the equipment, but they've kind of crunched their numbers and, you know, reduced to $1.60 a month. They should get out of it and schedule works towards a plan, which is kind of a, the range for finance committee.
Yeah, so we, we, we're really disav, um, disadvantaging the crews and the citizens because I think it's a fallacy to say that we pick up according to what our website says, which is, uh, every, uh, seven to 14, what is it?
Seven to 10, but we don't.
Seven to 10.
Sometimes we're really good and we do it every week.
Yeah, and so sometimes we're really good because it's not the fault.
Right.
Right, and, and that's not a reflection on the people that pick it up. You're asking the people to pick it up, to do it in a time period with more people, with more debris than we've ever had, with the worst equipment. So that's like saying, we want you to, we want you to be in the, um, in the Southern 500, but we're going to give you a Volkswagen to run the race in. And that's, that's what, that's what the people who are the experts are telling us. You're, you're wishing in, you know, in one hand, because you're not giving the people the tools they need to do the system the right way. And for once, I'm relieved to know that, um, this is why it's not working. We've got great people, we've got hard workers, we have the wrong approach and the wrong system. We've identified the right way. When we look at other places, you know, you're down at the beach, so, so you see how that system works and it's like clockwork. And the head of our, the head of our sanitation and grounds department now, the head of head, lives in a city where it happens like clockwork. And that's just wrong because we can't do that here and he's our, he's our guy. We need to be doing what those other places are doing. So here's an opportunity to make better a service to the people that they pay for. Sir?
Not, like I said, I'm not against it. I'm just, I just want to be more informed.
Sure.
And, uh, I think when you're informed, then you don't have, we wouldn't have to be here discussing this tonight. You know, um, whatever you do, everybody knows that you need better equipment to do what you're doing, the job being done. We expect a lot, but we can't do no more than what the equipment allows you to do.
Right.
So, uh, I'm not against that.
So here's one other viewable piece about it. Um, right now is a great example of how we're trying as a, as a staff to work smarter. The landfill was closed. The landfill is closed whenever there's rain, the trucks can't get in, and the landfill is out in Alver. So it's a 45 minute turnaround to get there. This system will allow us to continually work while they're moving to the landfill. And right now, for example, we're moving everything to a staging area, which is old, the old Walmart parking lot because of the storm debris. So we can get to the old Walmart parking lot and back into the neighborhoods in such a fast pace now that it's a constant loop between trucks, whereas it used to be the truck that picks it up drives out to Alver, dumps, drives back, and if it's raining, he can't go at all, which puts us back days. Now, we're moving to a system that we no longer hindered by someone else. We have no one else to blame but ourselves and we can't blame the weather because now we can operate the most efficiently possible. And in the end, I think what finance came to see is, um, as, as the solution presented by our staff, is for the minimal investment today will allow us to operate without increases in the coming years like we've been doing because we'll be working more efficiently like Bob said. We may have the same amount of people in the division, but instead of four of them being on a truck, we'll have two of them on a truck, working the most efficiently possible. And those other two can be allocated to address problems that we can't get to and they are numerous, stuff that we're just kicking the can on.
Let me ask this question. So if we make this investment today, um, with a $1.69 increase, if we don't do that, then in the next year, two years, we may still, if we don't do this today, then in the next year or two, we may have to have a $3 or $4 increase?
I think it'd be fair to say that you probably have smaller increases, but in consecutive years, if you look at it that way. When there's really, unless we have a significant, um, capital need, uh, there's really no reason. Look at what, look at what the dollar 60 increase brings in equipment versus, you know, maybe we lose every truck we've got, we've got to do it, you'd never get the $3 or $4 I would think, even in the yellow bag adjustment, we didn't hit that. But it is reasonable to say that given that we're going to run, you know, inefficiently, that you would have constant increases over time. I think that's fair.
And I think even more than that, I think we would have this increase, it's not have the equipment we need and not be doing the level of service that, performing level of service that we would require. So it's kind of a combination of all that, increase of fees and not even meeting our own standards for level of service.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, you know, like I said, throw out the standard of level of service because, um, you know, we figured out we've been doing it wrong. And now we've got a way to do it that I think that the taxpayers will go, okay, this is, I'm getting value out of my investment. Because it's, it's not, it's not running the way that it should now.
Because mayor of finance committee had identical concern to Teresa had when it was first proposed. Oh, yeah, but then we got the deep surface, the water kind of cleared.
Yeah, that's right. That's why we pushed to say, hey, let's go buy it and show the people that it's working, that this is something they can invest in. They will say, okay, yeah, I believe you. It's better now than it's ever been, but there's no path to do that. So it's, you know, which, which road to go down? So this is, this is first reading. And I think you have an opportunity here to take your packets home and dig more into it, uh, consult your constituents in your districts and see, uh, see what their feedback is on how we're doing. How is the service now being paid for? And then bring that feedback back and then we'll come to final reading and have another discussion to decide what path the city is for.
Well, why don't we do this? Instead of taking the packet to the constituent, why don't we have a meeting on it?
We just did.
No, I'm talking about have a meeting for that, a community meeting.
I mean, I, I think that, in my opinion, you, you all as council members have that opportunity to do that in your districts.
Okay.
All the time. Um, I mean, I think there's, there's no harm in bringing to the people the work of the But this meeting is obviously for that as well. So we'll have, um, final reading, a good public hearing, be an opportunity for people to speak to the whole body.
Okay.
But we all represent different.
Yeah.
Areas of different needs.
All right. So as long as people get to have their concerns, her, I'll be satisfied with that.
Yeah, so I mean, like I said, um, your, your job as a council member is to bring back concerns.
If this is first reading, then on second reading, we can let, um, everyone know that this was on the agenda and if you want to speak to it or understand it more, you can come to the public hearing.
Yeah, or, or even better, have that meeting in your districts. And so people that can't come tonight because we never have creative permits, say, hey, by the way, we're going to meet in Walton Park if you want to talk about it. Or, you know, Johnny likes to do breakfast. Um, you could, you could do your district. But yes, that helps people that can't get here.
Well, just like Mr. Wilson said, we, we need it formatted so that we can explain it to people. Um, because as he says, we're just getting it and we're going to vote on it. We're voting on it based on, you know, what the finance director and the finance committee, they, the conclusion they've come to. But if we had that, um, some information about that, then we would have that meeting.
It's a philosophical difference. I, I disagree respectfully with, with Vernice because we all get packets and we have two or three weeks to talk about this with the finance committee, with the staff. This is first reading and in municipal government, um, first reading is, is, you know, kind of moot. Um, it's almost a formality to get through your several readings. So we do get a chance to discuss it, whether it's in a work session or whether it's here, it's the same body doing the same work.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I can see it both ways. I can see the value of the community system to go through and, and crunch all the numbers and hear from the finance director and things like that. But also, I can see that the committee should probably report to council a week ahead of time so that we can see the background. In the packet, all it says is the increase in the ordinance. It, there's no background, there's no financial, there's no.
In fairness, tonight was going to be a presentation, but the, the department was house flooded, so we gave in, we. Yeah, so we can talk about, um, we can talk about structure and, and, I, I tend to believe that we waste a lot of time at, um, work sessions for items that should be kind of vetted out through committees and I think that's why we've got the committee structure. And you all like that structure. Um, you know, what I don't want to see is that we drag this out for months because quite honestly, this work is, for us to get two purchasing trucks is going to be six to eight months, which puts us in another budget cycle, which further kicks the can. So what we were trying to do is identify, this need needs to change now. If we can't change it with rate increase, what are we going to cut in the budget to fund this capital improvement? And nobody wants to cut anything further because we, we've got it bare tooth now. And so we're trying to change this process now rather than six, eight months. Think of it like sending a policeman to the academy. We may hire a policeman and be five short, but the day he goes to the academy, we're not getting him back in the streets in his own car for.
Twenty. Twenty minutes of the academy and another raid on the street.
Yeah, so that's not solving the problems we have. Sir?
But you're, uh, it, uh, look at it, just like I said, I'm not against it.
Yeah, no, I.
I mean, far as I know, you go past very free. My thing is the structure, just like Johnny just got to saying and I just got to saying, you bring it, when you bring it, you bring it here. I think I want to hear this thing before it gets, the council meeting, like we are here tonight. And then, you know, we wouldn't have to spend all this time because it was, we already been taking care of. Um, if we're going to pass it, we pass it. And we don't know what it is, and we're going to work it out. We wouldn't have to go through.
Yeah, no, I, I understand where he goes.
So I mean, I, all I want to do, I, I, I'd go along with first reading right here, but all I want, want to do in the, in the, um, future is that we know, and Johnny hit it right on the head, if we're in a committee meeting, all of these committees. if we're in a committee meeting, all these committees we got, we should present it to council before we come here for example.
Do we know? Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor. We're in discussion. What is the?
We've got a motion.
Selecting. Yeah, and we're in discussion. Is that correct? Okay. What is the prerogative of?
The county put the, um, I think, on the Walmart parking lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I was wondering.
So any further discussion on?
I have no further discussion. I just wanted to be sure that we do what we got to do.
Hold on a second, we got more discussion. Sir?
Could a compromise on this, at least for this particular issue, you know, we need some three weeks, right? First November could, in our packet prior to that meeting, some of the information that was shared be there and we can, you know, at least look over.
Sure. Yeah, like I said, we were supposed to have a presentation that probably needs to be in the, should have been in the packet.
And that Mr. Wilson said, we're not looking to hold it up. We just want the explanation to this.
I get that. So we're not here to discuss the...
We can vote.
Yeah. And then as a council, we can decide on format later. Okay, so all in favor of ordinance 4271, first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay. Item ordinance 4271 is passed first reading. We're moving on to new business, ordinance 4272, if the manager will publish.
And then in 2016, 2017 fiscal year, water, sewer utilities, enterprise fund budget.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title of presentation of ordinance 4272 by the city manager. This time, the chair will entertain the motions from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion and pass ordinance 4272.
Good. Is there such a motion?
Certainly.
Okay, any discussion here? None, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Ladies and gentlemen, we stand in the executive session. Thank you all for your time this evening.